That it sets the 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 press trend?
Yes, because we're going to be.
Sitting next to you.
All right.
That privilege.
Okay, but this is.
Should be able to tell.
I'm the last one in line. Nobody will.
Yep.
You're at what I'm saying.
Yep.
Good thinking, Brandon.
Thank you.
Brandon, I think you're right.
Come on, that's the end.
What I hear is you're always to the.
Okay, Brandon, that's a hard place to be. To the left of me, wow. Is there, is there room there? Uh, you know, to the left of me.
I give, I, I hear what you're saying.
Oh, that's fun. Do I have to have this in front of me?
I haven't been here and.
Just so you know, I'm moving this. Because I mean, I look up there and see myself. Sure, I say.
The whole camp's like, here, a little hot.
Right, 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 you know, I gotta put it there.
Right.
Right there.
I put my whole frigging. And I didn't need to.
Let me put this right here for you.
What's that? Oh, for me to give you mine.
Number, and then I can put it in mine later. After getting back. Am I doing okay, boss?
So far, so good. We haven't gavelled down yet.
No, no, no.
Plenty of time to go left. I'm just teasing you.
Thank you for keeping me.
Appreciate you. So I guess. You could tell me. So do they read this before we get started? Do they read that for the public, like we do a board meeting or not? I just start.
Yeah. And text you, phone you.
Got you.
Yeah.
But so does anybody read all this or that's just, okay?
Okay.
For purposes of our acting chair today, Judy, we do have quorum right now in person, so you may begin.
Okay, so she's on, Judy, you're muted.
Would you let everybody know their mics are live so they'll be careful about what they say?
I know about a hot mic, trust me.
Thank you.
Okay, well. So I'm, I'm going to call the meeting to order and we will do a roll call and then Linda, if you would also tell us what the ground rules are, then we'll go on to item number two.
Judy Abdo.
Here.
Robert Byrd.
Here.
Astrid Hager.
Here.
Yvette Martinez.
Here.
Brandon Nichols.
Here.
Maricela Ramirez.
Here.
Carol Segala. Ramalas Taylor.
Here.
Barbara Ferrer. Jacqueline McCroskey.
Here.
Deanne Tilton.
Here.
And Holly Mitchell.
Here.
Quorum is present.
And before we begin today's meeting, I wanted to thank everybody for attending our first meeting of the year. And we are very excited to welcome everyone back for our first board meeting of the year and in person as well as a hybrid model. And I wanted to provide an update to AB 361 that has been allowing us to operate remotely for these boards. Now, as most are aware, in October 2022 and more recently in January 2023, the governor confirmed his intention to terminate the COVID-19 state by the end of February 2023. And assuming no further updates from the governor, upon the termination of the COVID-19 state of emergency, our board and committees will no longer be able to meet remotely under AB 361 and will need to transition fully to in-person. Now, in looking ahead, First 5 LA does plan to meet fully in person by the March Board meeting. And all meetings will be conducted at First 5 LA in this NPR unless noticed otherwise. And for today's meeting, we are still operating under AB 361. As I mentioned, it still allows us to do our board meetings remotely. And public members can participate in this meeting via teleconference during the governor declared state of emergencies. And now, in the interest of maintaining appropriate social distancing, members of the public may also observe this telephonically or otherwise electronically as posted. And for the public members regarding public comments, remote attendees can submit public comments in two ways. The first way is written public comments must be submitted in advance of the meeting before 1:30 PM the day of the meeting. And those can be submitted to me via email at LVO@first5la.org. And all public comments received before 1:30 PM will be read in the order received. Any public comments received after 1:30 PM the day of the meeting will become a part of public records. Now, during the meeting, the public members can also participate in live public comments. And they can use the Q and A chat function on Zoom to express an interest in speaking to an item. It is important that these requests to speak be submitted via the Q and A chat box function before the item being commented on is presented. And when submitting a request to speak, public members are asked to only provide his or her and the item number the comment corresponds with. And all comments received during the meeting via the Q and A chat box will be addressed in the order they are received. All public comments will be allocated two minutes per person. Once the item is up and public comments are being discussed, then we will call your name. And we will call your name twice on Zoom for you to do your public comments. If we don't hear you initiate your, to speak, then we will go on to the next public comment. For all in-person public comments, as I mentioned, they will also be addressed in the order that you are received. And finally, before we do begin today's meeting, just a reminder to all remote attendees to make sure that you are on mute until that your name is called to speak or present. And to minimize multiple speaking at the same time and to ensure for a coherent dialogue, board members attending virtually can use the hand raise function or the chat box to express an interest in speaking. And then I will coordinate with our board chair for your responses. And with the exception of adjournment, which will be called for by our board chair, a formal roll call will be done for all action items. And a reminder to all board members attending virtually to take yourselves off mute prior to roll. And then finally, if technical assistance is needed during the meeting, you can contact me at 213-276-9389. And with that, I'm going to be handing this back to our acting chair, Judy Abdo.
Welcome, everybody. It's, it's good to see people sitting at their seats. But I'm glad it's a hybrid meeting. Our very first order of business for the new year is to nominate a new chair for 2023. Do we have any nominations for chair?
I would like to nominate Holly Mitchell.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I see several seconds.
Go ahead.
Okay. Somebody write down one of the people who seconded it. And if there are no objections, I'll just order that Holly Mitchell will be the new chair.
I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call.
All right. We will have a roll call.
Judy Abdo.
Yes.
Robert Byrd.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yes.
Yvette Martinez.
Yes.
Brandon Nichols.
Yes.
Maricela Ramirez.
Yes.
Carol Segala.
Yes.
And Ramalas Taylor.
Yes.
Motion is passed. Congratulations, Supervisor Mitchell.
So with that, I appreciate that. Judy, thank you very much for entering my name and nomination. I appreciate the multiple seconds and the vote of confidence from everyone. It's a pleasure to be here and I look forward to service with all of you. We'll now continue with the second order of business, which is election of a new vice chair. I'll entertain motion.
I would like to nominate Brandon Nichols.
Beautiful, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Let's go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Judy Abdo.
Yes.
Robert Byrd.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yes.
Yvette Martinez.
Yes.
Brandon Nichols.
Yes.
Maricela Ramirez.
Yes.
Carol Segala.
Yes.
Ramalas Taylor.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion is passed. Congratulations.
Okay, we're partners in this. I appreciate you. You got it. We got this. So colleagues, we're now going to go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Does any, do any commissioners wish to remove an item from? Seeing none, are there any members who want to comment on a consent? Seeing none, while we go ahead and open up for public comment on the consent agenda only, please.
Confirming there are no public comments on the consent agenda.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I move that we accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Beautiful, please call roll.
Judy Abdo.
Yes.
Robert Byrd.
Yes.
Astrid Hager.
Yes.
Yvette Martinez.
Yes.
Brandon Nichols.
Yes.
Maricela Ramirez.
Yes.
Carol Segala.
Yes.
Ramalas Taylor.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda are remarks from your new chair. How about that? I just want to say how truly excited I am to join First 5 LA in this capacity. It feels like just yesterday, as a, the CEO of Crystal Stairs, that I was sitting there trying to share my perspective and orientation as a provider. I think I may have come back once or twice as a city member of the legislature. We certainly partnered on budget actions. We were fighting to protect state investments in early care and education. But it is different to be sitting on this end of the dais. And so for me, just know that it feels full circle. And I'm very excited to be here. And I'm also excited just in terms of this new evolution in history for First 5 LA. And to be embarking on this journey with our new ED, Carla House. So it's, it's a privilege to serve with you as well. And we look forward to your leadership and your visioning and the new direction that First 5 LA will go. We've been through a lot. We've been through a lot. And I think many of us have learned a lot. We learned, A, that we could survive, and we learned, B, how to continue to keep this conversation, this organization going in the midst of an unprecedented public health and economic pandemic. And from my perspective now more than ever, elevating the needs of LA County's youngest residents who are your constituency group, who are our constituency group, has got to be, you know, front of mind as we continue to move an aggressive and thoughtful and strategic agenda. So again, I'm looking forward to working collaboratively with my board members to really engage in meaningful partnership. Meaningful partnership, meaningful partnership. Because we have an opportunity to continue to provide the amazing staff who call First 5 LA home with the policy level guidance and direction. And so I look forward to working with you all, getting to know some of you I don't know better as we talk about the evolution, the new evolution, considering our realities, our fiscal realities and the needs of our constituency. My staff said, be sure and share your lens, your child perspective lens. You know, when I first got elected to this position in 2020, a former campaign opponent, now friend and ally, Jorge Nunez said something that I just thought was so profound. He said, you know, Holly, when you take office, if the voters give you the privilege of serving through a term limited experience, 12 years, there will be a young Angelina who's entering first grade in 2020. And by the time you turn, term out, she'll be graduating from high school. What will you have done in that 12-year span of time to positively, positively impact the trajectory of her life? And I wake up with that reality every day. It guides my work at the board. And I wanted to share it with you because when we think about the work we do here every day, we are truly impacting lives on a very real tangible basis. And so I hope that you will share that vision for as long as you serve on the commission to think, what am I going to do? What decision am I going to make? How am I going to empower this staff? What budget decision are we going to make to change the life trajectory of a young Angelina? So I'm excited about these opportunities and look forward to sharing leadership and strategic planning and evolution for this organization with all of you. With that, I believe I'm supposed to announce the committee assignments at this point.
That is correct.
My paper here says, let me, let me, let me. Okay, I've got a good paper. I'm not going to share my paper with anybody. So let me note that there's been a rotation of voting rights among our county departments. And so for the year 2023, the Department of Mental Health will rotate back on to the First 5 LA Commission as a voting member. And the Department of Public Health will become a non-voting member. With regard to committee assignments, first of all, let me just, you know, clarify for those who, who may find it curious, who we selected vice chair. You know, I, I thought, as I was briefed in terms of kind of the governance operations, that it felt a little restrictive for the vice chair to automatically be the appointee of the chair. I just thought it was important that we have a broader perspective, I think, in the leadership of, of the commission. And so that's why we had Brandon nominated. And so at least as long as I'm chair, we won't follow that historic pattern of the vice chair automatically being the appointee of the chair. County is big. Well, I will, you know, fight all day long for the, the second district. I think the work of this commission is truly countywide. And I wanted to make sure that there was a countywide perspective as we were setting policy. So thank you for your willingness to share, to be vice chair. So executive committee members, Mr. Nichols will chair, Yvette Martinez, vice chair, Judy Abdo, and Astrid Hager will be members. Program and Planning Committee, all commissioners are certainly welcome to attend meetings. But the leadership of Program and Planning Committee will be Astrid Hager as chair, Jacqueline McCroskey as vice chair, Barbara Ferrer, Carol Segala, and Deanne Tilton. Budget and Finance Committee, where my heart is. Again, all commissioners are welcome to attend, but Robert Byrd will chair, Judy Abdo, vice chair, Maricela Ramirez, and Ramalas Taylor will serve on budget and finance. So those are our committee assignments for 2023. Any director have any question or comment on the chair's report before we open it up for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments on your remarks.
Well, that just allows us to roll right along. All right, we'll move to agenda item six, which is our opportunity to hear from our new executive director, Carla.
Thank you. Congratulations to us for having you as our new chair. And I, I'd like to echo the sentiment, how exciting it is to have you join us. And just the last action really showing that you're going to pave new ways for us to think about our work. And that is really exciting. I, I wanted to start by thanking the board. Thanking you all for giving me the opportunity to serve as the new First 5 LA Executive Director. I am thrilled on many, many levels, but really excited about partnering with you all to write the next chapter in First 5 LA's history. I am especially in awe that we get to begin our work together during Black History Month. And our nation, this is our nation's way of showing respect and recognition for the hard work and sacrifices made by our Black brothers and sisters. And to me, Black History Month is about what you all, the commission, has been pushing this board and staff to do. And it is about to elevate lived experiences. And during Black History Month, it is about elevating the lived experiences of our brothers and sisters, the older generation that has created historical moments that allow us to be in this room and the way we are today. It is about the young people pushing us to create a better America, a better country. And it is about us remembering that lived experiences come from the famous to those that are barely making ends meet. And how these experiences continue to shape, challenge, and ultimately make us a better America, a better society. And that is the hope and the value of this month that we hope to bring to First 5 LA. One particular quote that I love, it, it goes, "I had no idea that history was being made," she said. "I was just tired of giving up," Rosa Parks. This quote really, really resonates because it embodies a fight to do what is right and just, just because that's the right thing to do. And that's where we want our organization to be, to do what's fair and right for children, just because it's the right thing to do. Many of us have shared just how tired we are about the inequities that children face in Los Angeles County and throughout the state. We have shared that we are going to leave it all on the field to make sure that we make it right. And this is what the opportunity and this first meeting really means to me. It means that we are going to write a new chapter together in partnership, and we're going to leave it all on the field. And we're going to look at results accountability and really look at what we've learned from the pandemic. As we're living in this current moment, I'm reminded of everything that's happening at the state and how much is changing at the state and how much partnership opportunity that means. So when we think about the programs at the state that are serving the population we serve, the California Department of Social Services has reimagined, reinvented, and created a childcare development division that's saying, we're going to look at whole child, whole families, and we're going to center children and families and make sure that we're providing the services that are needed. The California Department of Education is really looking at creating a whole new universal program for four-year-olds that, that was not in the cards a few years ago. The state has a childcare union. We are, for the first time, seeing unionized workers talk about fair wages and a living wage. The state is building new infrastructure around childcare facilities from the ground up. These types of dollars would have never existed, honestly, seeing some of the leadership here in pushing us to really think about new investments. And the state is developing a new equity tool to analyze early care and education programs and to see where are we going to get dollars out. These type of tremendous opportunities are in front of us today to look at what new partnerships could look like. And this means that First 5 LA really has to show up to support struggling families to make sure that we learn from the pandemic, yes, all the things that we have discussed. But that we're creating a system that's really going to serve children. What this has meant in one month into the role has been amazing, one month of getting to know the incredible First 5 LA staff. There, there's four key things that I want to make sure that you all know will be a focus as we move ahead. First, staff engagement has been the most critical. The board was really clear that org culture matters as we look at our DEI work that matters. And spending a lot of time with the folks in the audience, those listening in, staff engagement is critical. The second piece is what the chair mentioned, our partnership. I love that, partnership, partnership, partnership with the board and what that will really look like, our communications together, and how we'll think about strategy together. And the last two, one, the third one is examining our fiscal reality. Our, our team will give you a sobering reality of what new policies look like. So we'll focus on that. And that leads us to what the chair has brought up, our strategic plan. Our strategic plan really needs to look at what we're going to do because of the pandemic learnings and our fiscal reality. And that will be the focus coming up. As I close, you all know how hard the staff works, but a lot of folks prepared these materials for you, and I really want to recognize Linda, who you all will have known and will get to know even more deeply, Jamie, who is graciously joining us, and she's a little sick, so cameras on and off. And then Peter Barth and John Wagner have really helped us think about strategically how to bring more information to you. Thank you so much for bringing this work. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions from commissioners on our new ED's report? Let me say, on behalf of the commission, how lucky we are. You know, the commission has had a history of very strong leadership, very fortunate from my perspective. And so you are forging your own path. I'm also, you have big shoes to fill because that always feels daunting to me, having had big shoes to fill at Crystal Stairs following two founders, so I understand. But you will chart your path and all of us collaboratively will, will help us cross that line of success. So on behalf of the entire commission, we welcome you and thank you. Yes. Ignore the comments. I'm trying to scan the screen. Okay. We'll open it up for public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the meat and potatoes of our work here, particularly for this meeting. I'll hand it over to JR and others to present our mid-year budget update. We're going to share and hear the fiscal year 2223 mid-year revised budget and learn about the 2223 budget calendar.
Thank you. And I'd like to welcome the new chair, the new vice chair. Welcome for, for that. And for the commissioners who are on Zoom, I'll do a little wave back to the camera over there. So as we were talking about earlier and as the, the chair mentioned, we're getting into the meat and potatoes of now we're talking about the budget. All right, so today we're going to review our current fiscal year mid-year review, revised budget for, for this, and it is for information only. The next slide is the objectives that we're going to cover is we're just going to remind everyone about this one-time change to the mid-year review process that we did for this fiscal year. We'll review the mid-year policy limitations and to get more into the meat and potatoes, actual mid-year adjustments that we're, we're doing for, for these. Like to acknowledge too, the hard work that my colleague. Like to acknowledge to the hard work that my colleague Raul Ortega and Daisy Lopez put forth in this effort. So so thank you for that. So let's get into it right now. So for this slide, as I said earlier, this are the changes to the process for this mid-year review process. What you see here is actually what is already provided in writing from the memo that you reviewed, as well as the memo that was reviewed and approved back in November. The reason why we took this different approach for the mid-year review for this particular time, there was two rationales around that. One was regarding more time for staff to focus on a lot of the strategic review and DEI efforts that we were doing. And then number two, historically, there was a very little decline between the last fiscal years in terms of the differences between the original budget and to the mid-year budget. So in summary, what you see here is the current approach of what we traditionally did in prior fiscal years. And on to the right, it's more about what is the new one-time streamlined approach of what we did for this mid-year review. In summary, for for these, it's less time, less material to review. And it allows the board, as well as our staff, to focus on a lot of the activities regarding our strategic review. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Raul here to get into the mid-year adjustments in the board policy and the rest of the mid-year review.
Thank you, JR, and good afternoon, commissioners. I appreciate you all being here and giving us the time to share with you the actual numbers for the mid-year budget adjustment. But before that, I know we have many new faces and new commissioners. So I wanted to share with you some of the board policies that we have in place. For the mid-year adjustment policy, which was adopted by our board, it does create some limitations and requirements related to our mid-year process. One of those requirements is all adjustments to our program budget, which represents roughly 80% of our overall budget, must be shown to the board and approved by the board. And related to our operating budget, which is mostly our personnel and what I refer to as SNS costs, supplies, and services, any any adjustments greater than $25,000, we take to the board. And that's based on our current policy. But historically, we have and we have continued to provide the board with information on all line item adjustments to the board, regardless of the amount, even if it is below the $25,000 threshold within the operating budget. So though we have a very streamlined presentation for you today on the mid-year, all of the materials that are in your board packet, the memo and the summaries, that is the same level of information that we have provided to you all historically. So what you are experiencing is very just a very short and brief presentation on the numbers at a very high level. And again, that is related because of the, what you see is a very low adjustment that we have been experiencing for the last several years. So on this slide, I'm going to take a few minutes to summarize the proposed mid-year adjustments at a very high level. The proposed downward adjustment reflects just over 1.1 million or 1.1%. These adjustments are driven by changes in spending across various program initiatives and operating line items. As mentioned before, the memo provides greater detail of those changes along with the summaries that were provided in your packet. And those items are specifically seven, A1, seven, A2, and three.
Catch up with you. Ortega? There we go.
Okay, thank you, Madam. So focusing on the operating, I'm going to focus on the operating, which is the second to the bottom line. You see a $38,000 adjustment, which represents 0.2% of the overall adjustment. Adjustments to the operating budget represents movement between line items and cost categories, resulting in the net downward adjustment of 38,000. Thirty, $30,000 of the downward adjustment is specifically to our consultant line item and staff prioritizing how we engage and use our consultant. So even though you don't see consultants specifically in the operating budget, I just wanted to call that out. And again, it's it's specifically called out, explicitly called out within the materials provided. On the program end, a downward adjustment of 1.1 million dollars or 1.3%. And that is primarily being driven by shifts in spending across various investments that are the results of activity timeline shifts. That's when activities were going to happen throughout the fiscal year have been shifting, updates based on year-to-date, year-to-date spending trends, and new funding. Within our highest investment area, which is family support, the home visiting budget represents roughly 1 million of the overall downward adjustment to the program budget. The adjustments reflect the anticipated sunsetting of five select home visiting sites through December 2022, with two of the sites transferring clients to other funding streams earlier than we originally anticipated, resulting in cost savings and reduced expenditures for the budget. The rationale was part of our sustainability efforts or sustainability strategies shared with the board in May of 2022. Given that these five sites had two or less home visitors, or in reality, we had a total of six home visitors that were across these five sites, which created a high administrative burden and inefficiencies across this investment area. We work closely with the Department of Health to ensure transitions of enrolled families and home visitors to other funding streams, including advanced notifications to allow sufficient time for organizations to complete transitions. In addition, we saw, we also acknowledged that there were reductions were also driven by some of the welcome baby sites experiencing significant understaffing. So we were able to recoup those resources and adjust the mid-year appropriately in that investment. And what is exciting in this overall downward adjustment is that we were also able to adjust an additional 100,000 downward due to new funding for medical managed care plans, which is being used to offset our initial investment originally budgeted for fiscal year 2223. So that gives us a total overall downward adjustments of 1.1 million dollars or 1.1% for the fiscal year. Now to continue to build off of that 100,000 of new revenue, I like to highlight additional resources for fiscal year 2223 that was not originally anticipated in the fiscal year 2223 budget. We received roughly 176,000 in funding from the LA County Department of Public Health, which will be used to continue to support the African-American infant and maternal mortality communication work. In this example, you will see an upward adjustment related to these additional funds within our mid-year adjustment and the corresponding costs related to those new dollars. And lastly, we were awarded funds from First Five California to support refugees resettlement in LA County, but they focus on case management and system short-term emergency childcare and short-term emergency housing. The corresponding expenditures have also been captured as part of the mid-year process. So what are the key takeaways for the mid-year? Overall, we acknowledge that we see a downward adjustment of 1.1 million dollars. The adjustments are primarily driven by updated information from our contractors and our grantees and working with our partners in making these adjustments and because of timeline of some of the activities that we were originally anticipating for fiscal year 2223. In addition, we're also seeing an additional non-first five LA proposition 10 funding that offsets many, in some cases, offset some of the anticipated expenditures that we were going to experience for fiscal year 2223. And we are acknowledging some new resources that also had made, created some upward adjustment within our fiscal year mid-year budget adjustment. I will now open it up for questions before I go to the next item.
Questions from commissioners? Yes.
I know we're going to cover this in some of the other presentations later. But one of the things I noticed in the information provided as a part of the director's information was there's a 20-some percent or 30-some percent reduction in the number of children being born. And I don't understand how that plays out in the projection as it relates to expenditures and the reduction plan and the strategy across the spectrum of welcome baby and home visitation. So I'm just going to hold that for that, but that has to come forward in some idea of what we're going to do. And I'm not hearing and haven't read anything that talks about sustainability, which is one of the things the board has continuously asked the team to focus on. So hopefully, as a part of your presentation, we're going to have a discussion of what we're going to do regards to that. And the second part that we're going to talk about more is the the fact that Prop 31 and the loss of revenue you're going to be presenting on, the strategy needs to be that we need to elevate our thinking and come up with a better strategy with regards to sustainability in light of these further reductions. And they, and the only other thing I have is a question. I noticed that when we looked at the revenue generation from the state, we still don't see September or October, November, or December. And when is that going to happen? And how does that play out with regards to where we stand right now? Okay, and so I'm just elevating the the discussion and tying it together with the other things you're going to present. But that's a big issue for me. So just so you know.
So if I can just respond real quickly, we will start addressing the Prop 31 revenue and the implications to Prop 31 in our next item, which we will start obviously touching upon some of the sustainability. As for the current revenue and the distribution from the state, historically, the revenues are distributed two months in arrears. So even though, so in, in, when we get July's revenue, we don't see July's revenue until either August or September. And that's when CDTFA, California Department of Tax Fees Administration, that's when they release and distribute the revenue. In addition, CDTFA also has some constraints in that they are not able to release Proposition 10 revenue until they finalize their audit. So until they are able to complete their audit, that's when they get the green light to then start distributing the revenue for the new fiscal year. So because CDTFA, I historically, it's taken them a while to close their books up in Sacramento, we do experience a delay in our revenue. So based on our historical experience, the revenue distribution is on track, based from our historical experience, but just for you to be aware of why we see a delay in the revenue.
Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner. I just want to jump on what Ramal said about the declining birth rate and the impact on our budget for welcome baby. I know we're going to talk about home visiting later in the agenda, but it seemed to me if we're going to reduce the budget for a welcome baby because of the declining birth rate, could we not then use that funding to expand beyond the welcome baby hospitals, for example, to the county hospitals to make sure that we are reaching more newborns for this critically important service to families with newborns? That would be my question.
And that would be a question, I mean, that would be, we will be able to answer that specific question as we move forward into our strategic plan review process that is currently underway. We just completed phase one back in November. And phase two will be starting pretty soon. It's right in front of us. And as part of like going responding to Commissioner Taylor's question, the reality is, is that with Prop 31 revenue and the significant decline in our revenue, we're definitely going to have to take a hard look in aligning our priorities with this strategic plan review process and aligning that to our fiscal reality, which takes time to do.
Sure.
And and I would just add that that's also a role I see that the commission plays in terms of setting the policy and the priorities. When Prop 10 passed, we always knew it would be a declining revenue source. That's just the reality. Now the the next zinger with the most recent initiative. And so I think those are valid questions. And we also have to be clear that we have a role to play in identifying what the priorities will be. When I talked about evolution, we're going to have to really kind of drive that policy train decision to provide, from my perspective, direction to our fiscal team to come back with to us and tell us the numbers of if we shift priorities because of some of the issues that you both have raised, declining births, do we shift to a new population of new children being born? So I agree with you. Just want to remind us that we're the policy-setting entity. So we're going to have to take responsibility for some of that from my perspective. Any other questions from commissioners? I don't want to leave anybody out that's on screen. Yes.
First, I just want to say thank you all for the presentation. Actually, very informative for me. I know you guys put a lot of work into it and that it's a lot more complex and detailed than the few slides that we talked through. And I do, I want to thank you for that. At the privilege of serving as a commissioner before, but it's been years now and I have a hard time remembering past mid-year budget adjustment presentations. So I have a question, just, you know, is this on trend and consistent with the adjustments we typically make? And particularly why I'm asking is, you know, things look very different to me post-COVID in my own budget that I'm responsible for. If I look at it, we have strange spikes going up and down in ways that I had not seen before. And I was wondering about the potential impacts of COVID on our current budget and whether this is typical or is this somehow affected, we think, by the pandemic we're hopefully emerging from?
So what we're proposing with this 1.1 reduction is in trend for the last three to four years since we've implemented the new strategic plan of 2019.
Yeah, okay, thank you. The second question I had, and you, it's just based on a comment you made in passing. Please don't stop making comments. Very helpful to me. I don't want to scare you. But you mentioned understaffing, and I was just wondering if you're hearing from the programs and providers we work with that they're unable to spend the money that's made available to them consistently because of understaffing. It's a challenge I'm seeing in other areas, and I'm wondering how much it might be driving some of what we're seeing.
My understanding is that, yes, that is correct. I can, related to welcome baby, I can ask our Director of Family Support to expand.
Not putting you on the spot, just maybe putting it out there in general. I do think understaffing is a challenge for a lot of the programs we're working on in Health and Human Services. And it's just, I'm just trying to get some generals in so that, because it may be something that as we do strategic planning, we need to take into consideration.
It seems to be consistent to what we are hearing.
Thank you. Thank you.
And certainly consistent with what we're experiencing at the county.
Exactly.
In our health and social service delivery departments and programs. Any other questions? I had a quick question as you walked us through kind of the budget formation process and the, when the board can expect to see documents and respond. So how and when does the public engage in the building of our budget? Is there a process or an expectation?
So for the public to get, when we approve the budget, we take it as an information item in May, where it's open to the public comments, including in June when the
Got it.
As for engagement in the development process, we don't specifically go out to the public to specifically inform. But the work that we do, we do get information from our communities, from our partners to help us inform. Size and what the investment is.
Helpful, but, but, but May, the May meeting, it will be presented and we've got that. Thirty day window for people to provide comments before the board actually votes in June.
Correct.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? And so I know this is a file and received. Do we take public comment on this item?
We do take public comments on this.
Okay.
And confirming there are no public comments on this item.
All right, thank you.
Before we move on, there is another section 7B, and that is just to. That as part of your packet and historically, we provide the annual budget calendar for when we develop. Our fiscal year 2324 budget. So before you is the calendar and which highlights all of the touchpoints. That we will have between the board members and staff and the specific budget and finance committee. So again, that document is part of your board packet for your review. And we just wanted to take a second to shine a light on that.
Thank you for that. So we're going to move on now in the same vein to item eight. Which is the evolving fiscal context. As we move forward.
Well, that was good discussion we've had regarding the fiscal reality of this. So that's actually a good segue into what we're discussing for, for this item for on the agenda. So as we were talking about earlier. We are now, when we talked about the midyear review just a few moments ago, we were talking about the present. What, what is happening in the current fiscal year? This presentation, next slide is definitely talking about the future, about where we're going. I applaud the discussions that you guys already had. Sounds like you guys read the material through all this. Really appreciate that on there. So we'll just go through a quick background about this. Again, you guys have understood the material and everything for, for this. Also talk about the impact of Prop Proposition 31 on our revenue fund balance. And then talk about next steps, which Raul alluded to earlier. Some initial thoughts at a high level, what we were thinking, focusing on the strategic review. You, you might, you will be hearing about long-term financial plan of how we're doing this. So that's all part of the steps on how we're approaching this fiscal reality in evolved context. So here's a quick background. As Raul mentioned, there's actually two state agencies, the California Department of Finance. The California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, CDTFA. These two organizations provide the Prop 10 revenue projections as Raul mentioned, typically around May and June. And as we understand the Prop 10 revenues historically have been going down about three to five percent for, for that. Now getting into Prop 31. All right, it was passed by California voters back in November 2022. And it was effective last month for, for this. And Prop 31. Prop 31 bans the sale of flavored tobacco products, which I believe we all know for, for this. As we already discovered and we already discussed, it puts additional pressures on us for, for that. So back in November 2022, these two agencies provided projections. Of what the revenue would be affected with Prop 31. So here's the big picture. I'm sure you read the material here. And just to orient yourself to the chart, on the vertical axis is the, the dollar amounts. And on the horizontal is the timeline over fiscal years. So on the blue line, okay, on the blue line, the blue line represents what we currently get or our current projections for. The Prop 10 from the DOF and CDTFA for, for those. So this does take into account what I mentioned earlier, the slight decreases, the three to five percent for, for those. And historically, just to note historically, what is actual versus what was projected are typically very close. So there is a lot of confidence regarding this projection for that blue line for, for that. Now here comes the reality of things, the Prop 31, which represents on the, the red line there. As you can see, there's a gap where we are and where the proposition 31 has impacted for us. The one note to, to show here is that between fiscal year 2223 and to the next fiscal year. You can see the, the big drop there. So that's when Carla mentioned about the fiscal reality. Yes, it made it more real for, for, for us. After that fiscal year 2324, that decreases kind of mirror what is projected. So those are steady state decreases. But the key takeaway from this particular slide is the transition from fiscal year 2223 to next fiscal year. This chart here are the numbers behind the, the previous slide. If you look at the table, if you bring your attention to that. What's on the first row there is our projected revenues, as I stated earlier, are typically on point for, for those. The second row in that table is the projected revenue from DOF and CDTFA with the impact of Prop 31. Right, the subsequent rows are just the differences in the amounts and the differences in the percentages for, for those. And if you can see in the different chart down there in the bottom right. You can actually see again, a different interpretation. I wouldn't say different interpretation, but a different chart, so to speak, of the impact of Prop 31. So if you again, focus on the first fiscal year 2223. For example, if we look at the blue box in that fiscal year, we're at 82 million for, for this. And then as I said earlier, once we transition to the next fiscal year. Which let's just say fiscal year 2324, moving to the red box. Okay, so from 82 to 62. There is a $20 million difference that, that gets there. So that's again, I know we mentioned about the fiscal reality makes things a little bit more real about that, right? So definitely want to bring this attention. We want to make sure that obviously the commission is aware. And I appreciate the new chair being a policy person, policy setting to help us make these decisions going forward. Now with this said, now that I presented the revenue and how that's the differences. You may be thinking about what about the fund balance, right?
Yes, right.
I know for, for that. So I'm going to turn that over to my colleague to talk about the fund balance.
Thank you, JR. So let's use some plain speak, fund balance. What is fund balance?
Can you change the slide?
Oh. Thank you, Ramalas.
Thank you.
So what is the fund balance? The fund balance, in other words, is what we have. Throughout the inception of Prop 10 and the inception of first five LA. It's the amount of revenue that's coming in net the expenditures. So it is savings that we have built up throughout many years since we have been in inception since 1998. So we have had a significant fund balance that has grown. And in the last probably here 14 years. For the last 12 years, we have relied on our fund balance to offset the level of revenues that has been coming in. In order for us to fund the programs that we have been funding. So when lower revenues is coming into the picture. Obviously a higher reliance on our fund balance to cover our cost is going, we're going to rely on it more. So the magnitude and the impact of Prop 31 to our fund balance is really if you focus on that third line where it's red. If you add a cross from fiscal year 2223 to 2728. That is roughly $84 million. So that means between now and the end, by the end of fiscal year 2728. We will have $24 million less than what we originally anticipated. In our current, that's, that's reflected in our current strategic plan and our current long-term financial plan. So again, the net impact is roughly $84 million. And although we have a significant fund balance. That can help support the additional decrease in first five LA revenue because of Prop 31. We realize that over time, the fund balance is not significant enough. In order to capture the level of expenditures that we have been incurring for many years. Specifically when we look beyond 2728. We can't be holding the current expenditure patterns that we have. In addition, what's critical about this slide is you see that our fund balance is going from what we're projecting at the end of fiscal year 23. At roughly 204 million, all down to 51 million. That is a decrease of $154 million. So if you were to extrapolate that beyond 2728. If you see the trend, and let's just look at the trend from fiscal year 2526 to 2728. We're going from 103 to 75. From 75 to 51 at the end of fiscal year 2728. That means in theory, we can only go beyond two more years with having an available fund balance. If we were to continue to incur the level of expenditures. That we are forecasting within our long-term financial plan and within our strategic plan. So compared to our revenue projections and the established spending limits that the board has approved. Since fiscal year 201920, that's when the board approved spending limits throughout 2728. We had not, we acknowledged that our thinking then does not reconcile to our fiscal reality today. That we are overcommitted, not only in the resources that we have, but even the work that we were forecasted to do between now and 2728. So what does that mean? What is the solution? We got to tackle it in two prongs. Short term is how we, how do we look at next fiscal year's budget? That is the budget process that I just reviewed the calendar. We're right in the beginning of our development of fiscal year 2324 budget. And our solution is we need to come in below the spending limit. The spending limit that the board approved of roughly 101. We know that we need to become, we need to come in lower than a 101. So what are we doing? We're talking with our partners. We're relooking at our work, re-envisioning the work. That we can strategically start aligning. We know that, you know, it may not be significant, but it's a start. It's setting the mindset. And then for the long term, we realize that we're in a very good position. And that we're in the middle of our strategic plan review process. We started it last year and we envision it, we're envisioning to wrapping it up this year. Where this is where we take the opportunity to align. The work that we're going to prioritize, the role that we're going to play as an organization. To our fiscal reality. And that's what's becoming ahead of us. And I really appreciate your comment, Commissioner Supervisor Mitchell, sorry. In that it is. We need to be strategic. We also need to be aggressive, but most importantly, we need to live within our fiscal reality. And that is with true partnership across not only the organization and the staff that you see behind them, behind me. But with you as our colleagues and our board members and major. Role players within the systems that we're wanting to engage in. So that's where we see the opportunity and we know that it's long-term. We may not have all the answers today. But that's our goal for the next fiscal year. So what are our key takeaways? We know that Prop 31 reduces our revenue more than we expected. Dependency on the fund balance at the current expenditure rate is not sustainable. We're going to need to revisit the spending limits that the board approved back in 201920 through 2728. And we need to expand on our long-term financial plan beyond fiscal year 2728. So for the next steps. We're going to align our updated fiscal reality throughout our. Strategy review process. We're going to update our long-term financial plan revenues and fund balance to inform future budget and program investments. For the future fiscal years in alignment to the strategic review process. Establish new spending limits informed by future budget reductions. And update our investment guidelines to reflect the current landscape. And going back to a comment that, a question that you raised is also looking at sustainability. You and I, we participated in a great conversation with John and his family supports team where we were acknowledging. Where we see opportunities with new revenue and generating. And it's not specifically revenue to sustain first five LA, but to sustain the work. And that's where we see opportunities and staff are engaging with partners, with the county and at the state level for those.
So thank you for that. Let me start by saying. Chairman Byrd, don't, don't leave me. Don't run for the hills and leave me as Chair of Budget. We have to lock arms and be in this together. So I'm going to look to you and the members of your budget and finance committee to. To lean in on this. Before I open it up for questions, if I could just ask. Our new executive director, because I don't want to get ahead of you. I, I've said my point about partnership, partnership, partnership was understanding that this is our fiscal reality. And my view of the role of the commission is to really set the policy. That then we have staff, you know, help us understand the fiscal implications of the policy. Tell me from your perspective, how, how you see the role of this commission in, in. Navigating this to these waters we find ourselves in.
I, I so appreciate you asking this question. A lot of the conversations we've been having with staff is the importance of the strategic plan. And really looking at our strategic plan and seeing what resets will be required given the reality. I, I think a lot of the smarts of the staff and making recommendations of where cuts may need to happen. Where strategic direction may need to happen. So would love to have us bring something to the board for reactions. And get general direction on here's strategies and policies that might work on this. So that, that's one discussion we've been having internally. The second is deepening our discussions with the board and having longer strategy sessions with the board. So that we can really look into some of the places where we want to focus our investments. Because this organization will need to evolve, to your point, very dramatically. Thank you for the question.
Of course, and I hope board members would be willing to again, lock arms. We may need to do a. Strategic plan reality check, maybe kind of. You know, strategic planning session among ourselves to dig a little deeper into this reality and figure out, you know, how we. Again, with policy setting, so 10,000 foot level set priorities. That, that we're hoping that the budget work can respond to. Quick question, and it may be back to you. Given the reality of Prop 31, where you know, it's, it's this real kind of internal tug of war. You know, I was in the legislature when we, you know, heard the debate. Over number of years, a, a number of legislative. Remedies to attempt to make sure that children won't be targeted by that industry with the bubble gum juicy fruit flavors. And to look at the numbers in terms of the decreasing revenue, it was a lot of people smoking some bubble gum baits. So it's, you know, it's a real catch 22. We, we. We, we don't want our children targeted. We, we, we are grounded based on this, you know, tobacco cessation theory and design. But I'm wondering if statewide, if the state association are discussing new strategies, given the reality Prop thirty-one has passed. Uh, I'm hoping that, because we're not in this alone, have conversations come up about how to respond, new revenue stream ideas, where are they?
So this is why we're thrilled that you're, because you know the landscape. There's first five associations. So we have a few other first fives to rely on. And our O-GAP, our government team is working very, very closely with others on the first five associations to figure out what sustainability strategies may we consider. No concrete recommendations, but there is the discussion that's starting. And before anything moves in that area, we would make sure to bring it back here. Um, and this is part of the sustainability, looking at our strategic plan and making sure that we are connected with what other partners are doing.
And I think not just sustainability plans, but any bright ideas about new revenue streams, particularly for two reasons, because, you know, we've already seen the state budget projections and the good days appear to be over, at least temporarily. They're already projecting a deficit, you know, and the challenge is with the passage of Prop ten, you know, I, I, I don't know that there's any vision or commitment from the state to take over any of this work in the general fund. They've, they've had the luxury of all these years of not having to, because Prop ten stepped into the gap. And so given that, I don't think we don't, they're not coming to save us. So how do we save ourselves in terms of thinking about new revenue streams? So I hope that we could put that also on the, the table for our statewide association to put their best thinking. We may have some thinking here, but we want to see what the association has to say. Questions from commissioners? Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I think one of the things we need to do is think out of the box and, and look at how we can collaborate with our partners and leverage uh, in order to sustain some of the programs that we're doing now and what we're doing, going to do forward, especially in integrating it. Looking at taking and leveraging our funds or collaborating with our partners to leverage some, some of their funds to support these programs and especially proof of concept. There's a lot of funding on developing concepts and, and modeling these concepts, like we did home visitation. So looking at leveraging to draw down state funds that they're not spending all of their money on, relevant to Medi-Cal, Medicaid, or those other funds that we can leverage through our collaboration with the county. And when you look at that, we reduce the amount of funding we will spend to fund the vast majority of these concepts to a smaller portion of that. Plus, if we collaborate with some of our partners that may have some funding to sustain some of these concepts. And when I talk about this, I'm not only talking about home visitation. I'm talking about Help Me Grow and all these other concepts that we're modeling. Uh, and then integrate that into how that would be sustained long-term. So that we need to think that way. And what I think is we need to raise this to the level of urgency and not wait five or six months from now to discuss this and come up with a solution. We need to do it now. And if we are not putting it that, with that kind of emphasis on it, that seems to be we're not taking this serious. So the end result is let's think out of the box, think a little different and see what we need to do and realign these programs so that they fit within the structure of Medi-Cal, Medicaid to draw down the Medi-Cal, Medicaid dollars that are given to the county. Because we're not drawing all of that money down. We can use some of our funds or some other funds to draw down that money to fund these programs, which are vitally necessary to our community and these families that are dealing, how do you say? Not being dealt with appropriately, the disparity in how they're treated and what they're getting. So we need to raise that level of urgency. Just a thought and think out of the box and stop thinking the way we've been doing it and how we can do it and should do it with our partners helping us to think it through. And we've got some brilliant people. Brandon's there, Dr. Byrd and others can help us think this through and how we can leverage that and can train us how to leverage these funds. So that, and if we have to change the structure and add staff that has those capabilities or train our staff to do it, then that's what we do. But I don't want to keep thinking, putting this off and saying a million here, that's not going to get it done. So we need to think more about what are we going to do, how we're going to do it, and what our collaborative partners can help us do, think through. So I'm just putting that out there as a part of this thinking process.
And Commissioner Taylor, as my grandfather would say, when we point one finger at three fingers, we point back. So we have to be a part of that process of thinking outside the box and figure it out. Commissioner Nichols.
Oh, just real quickly to build on Commissioner Taylor's comments. And I am glad that we have Commissioner Byrd on the, the Budget Finance Committee, um, because he understands some of what Commissioner Taylor is talking about. So for example, the child welfare world, which is where, you know, I work mostly. Um, we have a new program coming online where we can buy a dollar's worth of service by only putting up fifty cents, Families First Prevention Services Act. And a lot of the work that first five does aligns with that. And I don't know that we've taken advantage of those opportunities. They're new to me, too. It, it's a developing program. But by looking, you know, externally to see how we can magnify the impact of our dollars, we might be able to sustain some of the great work we've done or have planned. But it's going to take some creative thinking. And I do think Commissioner Byrd is very well positioned to help us think about that.
Mr. Hager.
I think it's really important that we understand that where, where we're spending our money is of the best value. And, and to do that, I think we need, maybe one of the things, and we've talked about this before, about we take a leadership role, obviously, what, what's happening and that we look for other resources. But I, I want to know that we spend a dollar and we, we get maybe five dollars' worth in service, but that there are other foundations and other things trying to do that, that we're not doing everything just because we did it the same way before. That we look at new ways to do it. And I, I think what Romales is saying is thinking outside the box and looking at it. So that we, and then finally, I think maybe, you know, we have this amazing staff here that, that, that I've learned to love over the last few years. And that we look at what's available and what's really happening in the community so that we're not missing opportunities to form partnerships. Oftentimes, we go right past privately funded partnerships. It would be wonderful to come in and help us and defray some of the costs. And, and again, I kind of tend to look back at why this prop was, Prop ten was, went through and the reason that was there. And Deanna and I talk a lot about kids at risk. And I, I think that, I love, you know, the idea that we visit families, but I'm also looking at, at children that weren't visited, that fall into the, into the world of, of being at, at tremendous risk.
Yes.
And I think the idea of looking at how do we partner with various providers and others in the community that can stretch that dollar and make it go further. Brandon and I have talked a lot about doing a assessment of resources in this county so that everybody can tap into that. And that's not just zero to five, but also other, other age groups. And I think we have not done that. And, and that would be one of the recommendations that I think that we have a catalog and, and a clearinghouse.
And that we don't duplicate work. Because I, for me, as a former provider and a policymaker, that, you know, this, that it's duplication of work because, well, we've always done it this way. We've always provided that service. And so we also have that tough conversation with ourselves. If, if we are aiding and abetting that duplication of services kind of wheel, um, now would be the time to get off the wheel as we have that assessment of what's available and what, what value first five L A brings to the life of children and families in L A County. So I agree. Any other comments from commission members?
Oh. That, that's a no chat from Commissioner Abdo, that the mics were hot.
Oh, okay, that was the earlier one, okay. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Liproski.
I just want to add to.
Beautiful. Right. History. Right, right.
Senator, the expertise that first five has built and to figure out what, you know, the sort of operational level.
I agree.
Partnerships.
I agree. I agree. And I think I would add, Commissioner Taylor mentioned Medi-Cal and, you know, the, the, the new world that Cal aim will thrust us all into. And if that changes, creates new opportunities, different opportunities or not, I'm not sure. I think the jury's still out. So we should add that to our list of programs and opportunities to investigate. Any other questions or comments?
That, as continued investigation and then some follow-up discussions.
Perfect.
Nichols, thank you so much. And, and that sort of strategic discussion is really, really helpful because we're tackling this together. So thank you for that discussion.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, uh, we will move to public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Okay, public, wake up. We're talking about some critical. I'm gonna go find Jane Q. Public in a minute. If you realize the impact these programs have on your life, you better come help us. All right, with that, um, we're ahead of schedule. You all are going to be impressed with my chair keeping the train running on time skillset here. So I'm looking out, are folks interested in taking the break now or waiting to three fifteen? We're going to take the break now. And is it okay if we come back at three? Beautiful, we're going to take a ten-minute break. We'll be back at three o'clock. Beautiful. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 3 o'clock. Beautiful. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 3 o'clock. Beautiful. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 3 o'clock. Beautiful. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 3 o'clock. Beautiful. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 3 o'clock. Beautiful. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 3 o'clock. Beautiful. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 3 o'clock. Beautiful. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 3 o'clock. Thank you very much. We're gonna move now into item 10, our, the agenda, an important element, given the conversation we've had already all afternoon, which is the year ahead and leading with partnerships. I'm gonna hand this off to Mr. Wagner, who will present staff and get us moving.
There, can you hear me? Yes. And it's really exciting to be able to off this next item, highlighting the issue of partnership. I feel after the chair's comments, we need to say it three times. So partnership, partnership, partnership. As we think about the work that lays ahead for us in 2023, I'll first introduce my colleagues on the panel and then offer a few contextual remarks, sharing why this panel is so important and timely, this being our first board meeting for the, for the year. Let's see if this is working. I don't think the clicker's working. There we go. Thank you. Thanks for the help. First, for the panel, I'm really honored to be joined by these distinguished individuals who are really passionate and committed to moving work forward, aligned to First Five LA priorities in service to children and families across the county. We'll be using the topic of prevention and our longstanding investment in prevention via home visiting to illustrate the importance of First Five LA's partnerships with county system leaders. After my remarks, you'll hear from Dr. D'Artagnan Scorsa, who joined the county just over two years ago, I believe, as the first executive director of Racial Equity, and in so doing, leads the Anti-Racism, Diversity and Inclusion Initiative, or ARDI, work. In this capacity, Dr. Scorsa has also been overseeing the efforts of the Prevention Services Task Force on which First Five LA sits as a member. After Dr. Scorsa, we'll hear from Diana Kariaga, the Director of First Five LA's Family Supports Team, which oversees our largest investment in prevention, home visiting. First Five LA has over a decade of investment in welcome baby home visiting and has been working closely with the county, including the Department of Public Health, Mental Health, DCFS, ICAN, and other partners to strengthen the infrastructure to provide a more integrated approach to this important resource for LA's families. And finally, we'll be joined by our Chief Transformation Officer, Antoinette Andrews-Bush, who will connect the theme of prevention and partnership to the implementation of our strategic plan and our commitments on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which have been topics brought forward to the board over the course of several points last year. As we are in the earlier years of implementing our 2028 strategic plan, we continue to assess what's working and where we may need further effort and. We are not starting this inquiry uninformed by some fundamental knowns of our work. First, First Five LA is fortunate to be a public advocacy entity with a dedicated funding source. Granted, as we heard our earlier presentation on the situation with Prop 10, or Prop 10 and 31, and our revenues, that funding source continues to go down and go down at a faster rate than we anticipated. But we still have significant resources to apply to our priorities. Second, though we as an organization are going through some significant changes in transformation, this is a great opportunity to clarify and enhance our understanding of our role and where we can best add value advancing this work. Where have we partnered successfully with other systems? What has been our First Five LA contribution to those systems and those successes? And where, quite frankly, have we had some challenges in moving that work forward? These fundamental questions can inform our thinking about our role, which in turn can provide guidance on how we approach the work, providing a strong alignment, a stronger alignment of role and added value to partnerships where this alignment makes the most sense. On this point of partnerships, many, in many ways, First Five LA can show up, as spelled out on this slide, bringing forward benefits from two sectors in which we have our feet firmly embedded, both as a member of the partner, our county government family, and also as a member of the philanthropic community. Though we don't have the scope or scale of traditional county departments, we are connected to those systems by virtue of the fact that so many of those systems are led by many of you on this board, in your role as county leaders and importantly, First Five commissioners. With that governance structure, we see the important role public systems can play in impacting children and families. And we know these systems are far from perfect, and we'll get a little bit into that further on in the panel. But together, we can approach system improvement, informed by First Five LA's unique advantage point of seeing how systems are accessed, navigated, and works together, and in some cases don't, serving kids and families. Driven by a focus on our target population of children prenatal to five and their families, we see a somewhat unique view of the intersectionality of these systems on families. We also have somewhat of a unique view informed by over a decade of investment in organizing community capacity to leverage and promote parent voice. Through our investments in Best Start, we've learned something about what to do and what not to do, and how to bring community-identified focus and priorities into the work we do to improve public systems. A great example of this is when LA County established the Office of Child Protection. First Five LA brought OCP into community and engaged with community partners to inform the work and what they were seeing as major themes that emerged in the county's first prevention plan. That approach has been replicated at a much grander scale by the county's support of the Department of Children and Family Services' work in Thriving Families: Safer Children, as well as the County Poverty alleviation initiative being run out of the CEO's office. The county, working in partnership with trusted entities like First Five and others to engage with and learn from community, can greatly strengthen the actual planning and development of this work. Our work with the county, or the County Center for Strategic Partnership is another example of that partnership. We have so much more to do in this area, and we, as we increasingly see system partners committed to and dedicated to this approach, it's exciting to think about the impact this can have. One such committed partner is Dr. Scorsa. It is a great, it is great to have a countywide approach and focus on prevention and promotion. And the Prevention Services Task Force has, from the beginning, brought in partners like First Five LA and others, including community lived experience, into the planning and development of this effort, which I know he'll have more to say about. So with that, I'll turn this over to Dr. Scorsa.
Thank you so much, John, for the opportunity to, you know, be here with all of you today. And thank you, Madam Chair and Board, for the opportunity to, to, to not only have a conversation with you about the work that's taking place in LA County, but about the importance of advancing prevention and promotion. I'm gonna briefly talk to you about some of the work that we're doing and already set a little bit of context and then get into a discussion that centers on what we, I think, are all very much concerned about, which is how we improve life outcomes for so many of our families throughout LA County. Next slide. So briefly, just wanna set a little bit of context. We know that the ecological contextual factors that exist in people's lives shape their life course. And by that, we mean these institutionally-defined milestones that we are supposed to achieve at certain stages in our lives. And I'm starting off here with a bit of a life course framework, because I think it's important to understand that that's what's driving how we're thinking about prevention and promotion. Folks' choice is situated within the context of their environment. So for example, if you wanna eat healthy food and there are no grocery stores, you're not going to be able to eat healthy food, right? Your, your food options are gonna be limited by decisions that are made either by public or private entities. Next slide. We also know that largely, affluence is what drives positive life outcomes and health outcomes. We know that really having access to more resources becomes a stronger predictor of how health can be improved in communities over time. And that often, stable poverty and social isolation lead to challenges in local socioeconomic structures. And it also limits our abilities to make options and take advantage of opportunities that improve our life conditions. Next slide. So in the county here, in the Anti-Racism, Diversity and Inclusion Initiative, we've taken a life course framework approach where we're looking at the structural pillars and the ecological context, the places that we grew up in, the schools and systems that touch our lives, the families that we grew up in, our access to networks and peers and mentors and the public systems that affect all our lives, that can all shape whether or not you have on-track or off-track outcomes in your lives. So for example, you know, being born, being able to, first of all, make it out of the hospital and be able to build a life of secure attachment with your caretakers and then move it to school ready to learn, all the way through the point that you are able to get a pretty decent-paying job so that you have stable full-time employment and are able to pursue positive outcomes in your own life, to the ones that might take us off track, which could be high degrees of school mobility or, you know, entering school not ready to, to learn at the level at which we would need to, right? So all of these things can affect our life course, and it's largely systems and structures that can help, that help to shape and drive it. Next slide. So when we look at our life course, it's important to note that there are certain outcomes that are affecting our families and children more than others. Include, and, and in those outcomes, we see significant racial disparities, including the likelihood that African-Americans are more likely to face challenges with regards to infant mortality or even have challenges accessing opportunities for, for homeownership. We also see this in American Indian, Native American, and Alaskan Native families, along with many of our Latino, Latina, Latinx, Latin families as well. Next slide. And it's moving from this idea that we're just gonna focus on the challenges that we deal with in life outcomes to advancing and promoting opportunities for us to do well. So again, reducing and preventing infant mortality is one side of the coin, but we wanna promote, you know, health in the life of our children and in the life of our families. We wanna strengthen the role that our systems can play in advancing positive life outcomes as well. Next slide. So it's important to note that here in LA County, many of our families live in conditions that are called concentrated disadvantage, and that concentrated disadvantage is essentially accumulated poverty over time. It's often aligned with many historical policies such as redlining, and we see this in some of the neighborhoods that have yet to have the types of investments that are needed so that those communities can thrive, neighborhoods that were often discriminated against or may have had freeways that bifurcated their, you know, communities or may have been locations where folk were geospatially concentrated and denied access to home loans or.
We are not starting this inquiry uninformed by some fundamental knowns of our work. First, First 5 LA is fortunate to be a public advocacy entity with a dedicated funding source. Granted, as we heard a earlier presentation on the situation with Prop 10 or Prop 10 and 31 and our revenues, that funding source continues to go down and go down in a faster rate than we anticipated. But we still have significant resources to apply to our priorities. Second, though we as an organization are going through some significant changes and transformation, this is a great opportunity to clarify and enhance our understanding of our role and where we can best add value, advancing this work. Where have we partnered successfully with other systems? What has been our First 5 LA contribution to those systems and those successes? And where quite frankly, have we had some challenges in moving that work forward? These fundamental questions can inform our thinking about our role, which in turn can provide guidance on how we approach the work, providing a strong alignment, a stronger alignment of role and added value to partnerships where this alignment makes the most sense. On this point of partnerships, many, in many ways, First 5 LA can show up as spelled out on this slide, bringing forward benefits from two sectors in which we have our feet firmly embedded, both as a member of the partner or county government family and also as a member of the philanthropic community. Though we don't have the scope or scale of traditional county departments, we are connected to those systems by virtue of the fact that so many of those systems are led by many of you on this board. In your role as county leaders and importantly, First 5 commissioners, with that governance structure, we see the important role public systems can play in impacting children and families. And we know these systems are far from perfect and we'll get a little bit into that further on in the panel. But together, we can approach system improvement informed by First 5 LA's unique advantage point of seeing how systems are accessed, navigated and works together and in some cases don't, serving kids and families. Driven by a focus on our target population of children prenatal to five and their families, we see a somewhat unique view of the intersectionality of these systems on families. We also have somewhat of a unique view informed by over a decade of investment in organizing community capacity to leverage and promote parent voice. Through our investments in Best Start, we've learned something about what to do and what not to do and how to bring community identified focus and priorities into the work we do to improve public systems. A great example of this is when LA County established the Office of Child Protection. First 5 LA brought OCP into community and engaged with community partners to inform the work and what they were seeing as major themes that emerged in the county's first prevention plan. That approach has been replicated at a much grander scale by the county's support of the Department of Children and Family Services work in Thriving Families Safe for Children, as well as the County Poverty alleviation initiative being run out of the CEO's office. The county working in partnership with trusted entities like First 5 and others to engage with and learn from community can greatly strengthen the actual planning and development of this work. Our work with the county or the County Center for Strategic Partnership is another example of that partnership. We have so much more to do in this area and we, as we increasingly see system partners committed to and dedicated to this approach, it's exciting to think about the impact this can have. One such committed partner is Dr. Scoresa. It is a great, it is great to have a countywide approach and focus on prevention and promotion. And the Prevention Services Task Force has from the beginning brought in partners like First 5 LA and others, including community lived experience into the planning and development of this effort, which I know he'll have more to say about. So with that, I'll turn this over to Dr. Scoresa.
Thank you so much, John, for the opportunity to, you know, be here with all of you today. And thank you, Madam Chair and Board, for the opportunity to, to, to not only have a conversation with you about the work that's taking place in LA County, but about the importance of advancing prevention and promotion. I'm going to briefly talk to you about some of the work that we're doing and already set a little bit of context and then get into a discussion that centers on what we, I think, are all very much concerned about, which is how we improve life outcomes for so many of our families throughout LA County. Next slide. So briefly, just want to set a little bit of context. We know that the ecological contextual factors that exist in people's lives shape their life course. And by that, we mean these institutionally defined milestones that we are supposed to achieve at certain stages in our lives. And I'm starting off here with a bit of a life course framework because I think it's important to understand that that's what's driving how we're thinking about prevention and promotion. Folks' choice is situated within the context of their environment. So for example, if you want to eat healthy food and there are no grocery stores, you're not going to be able to eat healthy food, right? Your, your food options are going to be limited by decisions that are made either by public or private entities. Next slide. We also know that largely affluence is what drives positive life outcomes and health outcomes. We know that really having access to more resources becomes a stronger predictor of how health can be improved in communities over time. And that often stable poverty and social isolation lead to challenges in local socioeconomic structures. And it also limits our abilities to make options and take advantage of opportunities that improve our life conditions. Next slide. So in the county here in the Anti-Racism Diversity and Inclusion Initiative, we've taken a life course framework approach where we're looking at the structural pillars and the ecological context, the places that we grew up in, the schools and systems that touch our lives, the families that we grew up in, our access to networks and peers and mentors and the public systems that affect all our lives. That can all shape whether or not you have on track or off or off track outcomes in your lives. So for example, you know, being born, being able to first of all, make it out of the hospital and be able to build a life of secure attachment with your caretakers and then move it to school, ready to learn all the way through the point that you are able to get a pretty decent paying job so that you have stable full-time employment and are able to pursue positive outcomes in your own life to the ones that might take us off track, which could be high degrees of school mobility or, you know, entering school not ready to, to learn at the level at which we would need to, right? So all of these things can affect our life course and it's largely systems and structures that can help, that help to shape and drive it. Next slide. So when we look at our life course, it's important to note that there are certain outcomes that are affecting our families and children more than others include, and, and in those outcomes, we see significant racial disparities, including the likelihood that African Americans are more likely to face challenges with regards to infant mortality or even have challenges accessing opportunities for, for home ownership. We also see this in American Indian, Native American and Alaskan native families, along with many of our Latino, Latina, Latinx, Latinx families as well. Next slide. And it's moving from this idea that we're just going to focus on the challenges that we deal with in life outcomes to advancing and promoting opportunities for us to do well. So again, reducing and preventing infant mortality is one side of the coin, but we want to promote, you know, health in the life of our children and in the life of our families. We want to strengthen the role that our systems can play in advancing positive life outcomes as well. Next slide. So it's important to note that here in LA County, many of our families live in conditions that are called concentrated disadvantage. And that concentrated disadvantage is essentially accumulated poverty over time. It's often aligned with many historical policies such as redlining. And we see this in some of the neighborhoods that have yet to have the types of investments that are needed so that those communities can thrive. Neighborhoods that were often discriminated against or may have had freeways that bifurcated their, you know, communities or may have been locations where folk were geospatially concentrated and denied access to home loans or investments in local schools, et cetera. Next slide. So in the county, the way we think about this is by understanding how all of these factors institutionally, relationally, spatially affect our lives and we call that in many ways, structural racism, right? So looking at the ways in which these pillars affect and operate within our communities to produce gaps in life outcomes. So if you take an outcomes approach, then when we begin to talk about prevention and promotion, it helps to situate and locate what we could be doing to strengthen and advance positive outcomes in people's lives. Next, next slide. We also know that when we talk about this work, we think about it from the perspective of what it means to achieve equity. And not that we see the ground on equality, which is essentially treating everyone the same or giving them the same resources and expecting them to take advantage of the same opportunities. But instead, recognizing that differences matter and that systems must be balanced to distribute resources and opportunity so that people can reach equality. And it's ultimately about equity is ultimately about treating them justly according to their circumstances. And so when we think about LA County, we think about promoting prevention, promoting positive life outcomes. We have things that we want to prevent, right, which are negative outcomes, that some of the which I showed you earlier and things that we're, we're trying to promote. And that's where equity comes into play. Equity helps us promote and make investments in areas where there may be greater needs based upon the conditions that people may experience in their communities. Next slide. And ultimately, we take an anti-racist approach. And by anti-racism, I mean proactively identifying and eliminating racism in our systems, organizational structures, policies and practices. So that again, we redistribute power equitably. Next slide. Now, what's important to note if we're talking about it, especially from a perspective of what we're trying to address here in our communities, we know that these, many of our communities were shaped by intentional policy decisions. So, you know, when we talk about, you know, potential programs like FFPSA or we talk about the role that many of our child welfare and our justice systems play, we, we have to take a perspective that helps us understand the ways in which policy conversations shape these institutions. And so having a historical analysis allows us to situate and locate the work that we're doing, you know, instead of being like a fish in water, right? Not realizing, you know, what's going on around us, we have to take a step back, look at how these policies have shaped our lives and ultimately shaped the systems that, that, that operate to affect the lives of so many of us here in Los Angeles County. Next slide. And if you want to learn more about any of these, you're welcome to do so by visiting this, you know, these QR codes. I believe it's in your board package. So I invite you to, to learn more about the role that these historical efforts have played in shaping life outcomes. And invite you to reach out to my office as well, if you're interested in learning more or even diving more deeply in any of this. Next slide. So the board decided to address these issues by launching the Anti-Racism Diversity and Inclusion Initiative, known as ARTI. Next slide. And created the board's eighth board directive priority to boldly articulate that an anti-racist policy agenda will help us fight structural, fight against racism, eliminate structural racism and address bias in all of its forms and dimensions. Next slide. And as a result, we've set a vision and that vision is to ensure that LA County is a place where all of our residents are healthy, experience justice and thrive with a focus on building capacity across our organizations and sustaining the development of through policy work, addressing the cultural issues that exist within our workforce and making sure that we're aligning our budgets with our equity priorities. Next slide. Ultimately, when we think about prevention, think about it from again, this perspective of what we're trying to do, which is support positive life outcomes and prevent negative ones. Now, in our work in the Prevention Services Task Force, what we found is that there were challenges and opportunities for improvement, that there were structural barriers that prevented, in some cases, a collaborative culture across departments, that there was a lack of capacity to share and integrate data. There were often user navigation barriers and racial disproportionality and disparities in how we deliver services indoor who may be affected by our systems, namely our carceral systems and in other cases, our child welfare systems. We also recognize that we needed to build tools to integrate and coordinate efforts across our departments, but we recognize that there were strengths as well. You know, we have a deep sense of shared values and commitment as well as a strong ability to collaborate and work across relationships and service areas. And the board, fortunately, under the leadership of, of our board and with the supervisor Mitchell as the author of a motion, directed the creation of a Prevention Services Task Force to look across domains so that we can ultimately effectuate a comprehensive community-based prevention services delivery system throughout the county. So that means we're taking a step back and thinking about how we can support positive life trajectories with our children, youth and families, as well as with our older adults across areas like health and housing, education, environment, justice and safety and the like. That work has led to developing a shared vision, guiding principles and a countywide model for prevention and promotion, as well as understanding how we can address operational barriers to coordinated delivery systems, as well as identify the necessary functions to effectuate a comprehensive community-based prevention services delivery system. Next slide. We recognize that there are goals that we need to prioritize as it, as it related to our both prevention metrics. So looked specifically at where there may be large racial gaps, where there may be a higher prevalence, meaning it affects more people, where there may be higher leverage and opportunities to transform conditions in communities. And we're, by affecting one particular issue, we are able to address those in, in other areas. So for example, instead of focusing on school absences, if we focus on high school graduation, we can address not only the ability for young folk to pursue post-secondary educational credentials or trade or vocational opportunities, but we can also ensure that we reduce the likelihood that many of our, our young folk may move into the carceral system. This also ties very closely with what we're doing at ARTI more broadly. Next slide. By setting countywide racial equity strategic goals. And as you can see, these strategic goals are also very much aligned with many of the priorities that, that you all have also identified in your strategic plan, including addressing the health of our babies and their mothers, right? So reducing infant mortality and improving maternal health. Also making sure that families have the income they need to do well and to thrive, ensuring that they have post-secondary educational opportunities, again, with labor market value. So instead of, you know, you know, so making sure they can go to vacation or trade school or get some sort of certification or credential so that folk can thrive, ensuring that they're stable full-time employment and addressing the likelihood that some of our families are going to face engagement in the carceral system. All of this ties into our county's vision for prevention and promotion, which we will be presenting to the board, which is to make sure that we have an equitable community-driven and holistic prevention and promotion system that creates stable, a stable, safe, thriving and connected communities. Again, looking across many domains, you can see where child and family welfare may fit in here. You can see the importance of building out economic opportunities so we can sustain effective and stable housing in families, as well as address justice and safety needs across the board. Next slide. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions when, well, when we get to that stage. And at this time, John, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Scoresa. Next will be Deanna to talk a little bit more about home visitation.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So it's exciting to highlight and share our partnership work in home visiting. First 5 LA has had more than a dozen years of investment in home visiting, starting in 2009. The investments in Welcome Baby and Select Home Visiting are really an important model because they represent a network of programs that are coordinating together to identify and connect families to the right program and level of support that meets their unique needs. The Board of Supervisors supported and saw the need to work in partnership and in 2016, passed a motion on home visiting that really kicked off the momentum for collaboration and partnership work at a systems level. The 2016 motion directed Department of Public Health to work in partnership with the Departments of Health Services, Mental Health, DCFS and First 5 LA to bring a more focused effort to creating a coordinated and broadened approach to home visiting. So this motion, we'll get to the right slide. You knew it expected technological cliffs. So this motion led to the development of the LA County Home Visiting Action Plan in 2018. This really has been a blueprint identifying the needs and collaboration efforts between key entities in the county with a focus on building out an infrastructure to implement a system-wide approach. There have been additional board motions in 2019 and 2021. And a thank you to Supervisor Mitchell for co-sponsoring one in 2021 and for her support of home visiting. And really, the last seven years have reflected an inclusive planning process, which has included not just funders, but key partners from multiple county departments, providers implementing the programs and input from home visiting participants themselves. So however, as you can imagine, trying to build a unified system or approach has had its challenges. This slide highlights a few of those and I will share on the following slides how working in partnership has been critical to addressing them. So first, one challenge was achieving a system-level perspective within home visiting. So 10 years ago, home visiting funders typically operated in a silo. They were focused on implementation of their program and those providers typically were just focused on their enrollment and their goals. And it's really important to know that having a different, a diversity of models really is what helps to support and meet family needs. It's a win for the families and the system to have many approaches and options for them. So the focus needed to be on funders and programs coordinating together to connect families to the right program for them. Another challenge that emerged within home visiting was when we had the expansion in 2018 and providers were implementing one program model, but having now to manage multiple funding streams and often with different reporting requirements, which has been a challenge for them to navigate and a burden as well. We've had the lack of coordinated long-term sustainability planning, which has affected system-building efforts. And finally, limited referral pathways and partnerships connecting home visiting to family-serving systems, which has been a barrier that has limited access to services. So how has working in partnership helped address these challenges? So let's talk about the first challenge, which is not having a coordinated system-wide approach. So as a result of the action plan, First 5 LA, DPH, DMH and the Office of Child Protection worked in partnership to help establish the Collaborative Leadership Council. So it was initiated in 2019 and the purpose is to really perform that ongoing system monitoring, adjustment, coordination and advocacy. It's intended to serve as a bridge connecting key county leadership, home visiting funders, experts, stakeholders and input from home visiting participants themselves. The CLC was facilitated by the Office of Child Protection through the fall of 2022 and oversight was transitioned to the Department of Public Health in late fall. This has been a critical step to holding a systems-level perspective to help ensure that coordination between funders, county partners and providers. So in addressing these system-building challenges, First 5 LA has filled various roles. And as John mentioned, we have the unique vantage point of being able to see the intersection of multiple systems, which has helped us to better coordinate and leverage efforts to address the gaps. So let's go back to two of the system challenges previously mentioned. The first was achieving system-level oversight. So First 5 LA was able to coordinate with the Office of Child Protection to leverage funding from the Hyding Simons Foundation to support facilitation of that system planning process. This consultant support was instrumental in bringing together all those key stakeholders to help develop and establish the CLC. The second challenge was having multiple funding streams, which in and of itself is a great benefit to the system, but we have not had the ability or infrastructure to maximize those funds. So in partnership with DPH and other county leaders, we identified the need to have an understanding of how to blend and braid funding. This led to the Home Visiting Fiscal Mapping Project, which was led by national expert Kay Johnson. And the recommendations from that report were foundational and continue to inform our sustainability strategizing efforts. And in fact, this report led to a conversation between DPH and the Hilton Foundation, who successfully granted funds to build a centralized billing system that will help us to maximize funding across program models and funding streams. So finally, I want to call out another key system challenge, which is exploring sustainability strategies with system-wide implications. Very critical given our earlier conversations. So this slide calls out three examples. Families First Prevention Services Act, which Commissioner Nichols, I'm very glad you brought up, as well as Commissioner Rikroski. This is a federal revenue stream intended for children at imminent risk of foster care placement and uses a prevention approach to connect families to services. So FFPSA efforts are being led by DCFS and conversations to prepare for implementation have brought many voices and county leaders to the table. Within home visiting efforts, there are multiple pilots under development to test new referral pathways into home visiting, not just with DCFS, but partners such as probation and Laco. And this could be a potential revenue stream for services such as home visiting. First 5 LA has also been working in close partnership with managed care plants and established a contract with Promise Health, which is allowing us to demonstrate how the goals of home visiting and managed care plans are mutually supportive and potentially an effective sustainability strategy. And finally, given First 5 LA's declining revenue and delays of FFPSA implementation, the Department of Mental Health is in conversations with First 5 LA to enhance home visiting efforts using prevention and early intervention funds. So these are all examples of how working in partnership has been critical to system-building efforts, from the coordination to addressing system gaps and to having a shared exploration of sustainability strategies with system-wide implications. And finally, some, some comments on the inclusion of parent voice in system-building efforts. So home visiting is an important thread connecting families across multiple systems and prevention services with navigation support. Including parent or caregiver voice is an important diversity, equity, inclusion strategy and helps enhance the outcomes of programs for families and children. And this is what organic need that came from the ground up. It was identified during the Home Visiting Consortium strategic planning efforts last year as a desire to really have parents at the table. So as a result, the consortium created a parent voice work group, which is taking the lead and identifying the needed infrastructure for parents to be part of multiple home visiting tables within the consortium and within the CLC to ensure participation at a systems level to help inform, co-design and enhance services and outcomes. So in these, in these examples of these challenges and all these ensuing efforts, working in partnership has been critical in advancing the work and demonstrates clearly how more can be done together than alone. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Antoinette to speak about First 5 LA strategic planning efforts.
Good afternoon and thank you, Deanna. In November of last year, the board approved a new North Star that every child in Los Angeles County would reach their full developmental potential throughout the critical years of prenatal to five. As Dr. Scoresa mentioned, there are systems and structures that will either support or inhibit their ability to, to reach their full developmental potential. And that is why it's essential for First 5 LA to focus on changing systems. So this panel presentation today really reinforces our hypothesis that changing public systems in partnership with others is how First 5 LA can at scale advance longer-term population level outcomes for children and families. Because of our, sorry, we're having some coordination issues here. So because of our partnerships and coordination with family-serving public, county public agencies, such as those on our board and longstanding relationships with communities, particularly through our Best Start work, we are uniquely positioned to work within and across public systems to improve conditions for children and families. And reflective of today's presentation, we're committed to prevention and to diversity, equity and inclusion as we work with our county public agency partners and communities to address the effects of bias and persistent inequities within public systems. So our work to change public systems is really about advancing belonging and justice for children and families for those communities that really experience significant inequities. Next slide. As First 5 LA continues to review and adapt our strategic plan, our intention is to make it a lot more understandable, a lot more meaningful and dynamic so that our work to change systems meets the evolving needs of children and families. So the focus of the work ahead includes deepening our relationship, or deepening our understanding of the changing context surrounding children and families and addressing the root causes of the systemic issues that are affecting them. We'll do that by reviewing data and reports, listening to those with lived experience, continuing to cultivate relationships with and between county public agencies and communities. Our commitment to impact and declining revenue requires us to sharpen our role, assessing where we can promote equity and add value given our unique position and perspective. Now, over the next several months, we will engage commissioners, engage our partners and engage communities in our strategic plan review. We know that we have to narrow our focus, we have to narrow the strategies and allocate resources in, in ways that enable us to work effectively in partnership with others to achieve results and not just any results. and not just any results, results that matter for children and families. So this concludes our presentation, and I will now turn it to the chair for board discussion.
Thank you very much, staff here present, and Dr. Scorsa, thank you so much. Makes me proud every time I see you present, that I'm a member of a board that had the courage and vision to confront, you know, the role the county played in perpetuating some of those policies that have willfully and intentionally held people back, and to call out anti-blackness. So I appreciate you. Thank you very much. Questions commissioners have of this very meaty presentation? I've heard Dr. Scorsa folks asking for copies of your slides, so know that those will be made available. Comments, questions? Commissioner Hager, did you? Was I reading your mind, or did you?
You're reading my, you're reading my mind. I, this is exactly what I was talking about in terms of coordination. Because like, for example, in the county, there's a brand-new foundation that has $100 million in it, and they're really focused on sustaining the working poor. You know, many of whom are those who are getting the, you know, home visitation. You know, which is a great, you know, great thing. And the idea being of how can we provide them with emergency funding? So if we had a clearinghouse where they knew, if you're home visiting, this family is in need, their refrigerator is broken, or they can't pay their utility bills, that there's a place they can call and get, you know, the help that they, that they need immediately that day, so that they can, in fact, get themselves out of that situation. So that's, I think the partnership is not just, you know, I hear a lot about, you know, money and our financial, and fewer people are smoking, I can't work on that. But, you know, the idea being is that how do we leverage the resources that people are bringing to the table so that we could have access to those things, you know? Brendan and I have talked a lot about that in terms of how do we sustain families so that we sustain the family together rather than detain the children, which is one of our, you know, super motives. And then I'm going to throw this out there, because I'm, and I'm really, really interested in equity and equality and dealing with families that haven't had access. I think that one of the major causes of kids not being ready to start schools, particularly in the inner city, where they've never had access to good food and and stores that they can buy fresh vegetables and eat a different way, is, as you know, everybody in the audience knows, I'm going to say this, is fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, and the idea that these kids are brain damaged not because they did anything wrong. And we have allowed them to not succeed in school, and then end up one of the things in the juvenile justice system. And sadly, sadly, is a dominant factor in the African-American population that has, for hundreds of years, been asked to take the worst possible living situations, eating situations, access to services situations, and that has to change. Now, we know that if we can identify them early enough, and certainly we're experimenting a lot with treatment, everybody said you couldn't treat it. I disagree. We're seeing kids change. We're seeing families grow. We're seeing kids learn. And we absolutely have to be a leading force in getting those kids identified early and into the treatment that they need in order to prevent them from ending up in the justice system. So, I mean, I'm going to, I'm really going to harp on that this year, because I do think that that's something that ends up causing failure in many of the programs that we have, and that includes home visitation, because we're not talking to parents about how to deal with their kids. And there's a tremendous guilt associated with a mom who drank, and then ending up with a child, and how do we end up supporting her? So there's two things here. One is access to everything. All right? Access to everything that they need, and that we make that available. And that we take a stand at First 5, that the number-one cause of developmental delay is fetal alcohol, spectrum disorder, not anything else, and that we should be addressing that if our goal is that everybody's ready to start school. So there I, now I've started it.
I appreciate hearing your perspective, and, you know, I will never forget the presentation I saw as a sitting legislator from Stanford and the UC Davis Institutes on Poverty about the impact poverty has on brain development. And so I think it's both, not only fetal alcohol, but more broadly, poverty. And I think that that's probably less understood, less embraced, but it has measurable, deep impact on just, just the kinds of things you said. So I would add to your point, if we're going to talk about fetal alcohol, which is why I brought forward the motion to create the Poverty alleviation initiative at the county level. Poverty also plays a, particularly multi-generational. But to see the brain scans that were presented at that hearing, children born into poverty, and you all know, Dr. McCroskey, in terms of language development and all of that. So I would just add that as a second paragraph to your point. Fetal alcohol and poverty. Absolutely. Commissioner Abdo.
Thank you. I am sitting on the LA County School Board, LACO. And one of the things that we are seeing at every single meeting is statistics from the probation department and information about what's happening with kids who are in the probation system. And I'm just wondering if in home visiting, we're addressing families that have within their family structure people who are in probation, in the probation camps or system. And maybe we're not, maybe that's not something we can do, but it seems to me that this is a real need within the county to address how many kids are having a very hard time within the probation department, the camps.
And if I can try to help out to that Commissioner Abdo. So FFPSA has brought many, many to the table, probation included, and there's efforts underway there. And we have also been working with probation to do a pilot around referrals of pregnant youth in the probation system to home visiting services. So we're in the point of having conversations to train the probation staff to begin to explore that for the spring, to make that linkage, because it's such an important population to work with.
Thank you for that information. I'm glad to know we're in contact with them, and they are a very needy part of the county, obviously.
Yes, they are, Commissioner. I would agree with you 125%. I would add too that our brand-new department, Department of Youth Development, as we stand up that new department, making sure that there's a connection to, but I agree with you. Commissioner Taylor.
I just want to highlight the importance. As the supervisor mentioned, poverty is a huge issue. But that means then that that community doesn't know what's available to them. So when we're collaborating with our partners in their systems, as well as what we're doing, we have to talk about navigation. I was sitting in a meeting in the Black and African Heritage USCC, and the lady was telling me, almost to tears, she had a son that had developmental issues. She went to a system to try to get help, and they moved her in such a direction, they put her in despair. These systems don't think about what they do to people when they don't help them. And that's, again, an issue of poverty and the lack of understanding of what is available and how to get it. So systems navigation across these different systems to help people to get what they need versus push them back. And it broke my heart to see her start crying, and I had to console her in what she's doing, to say, there is a way, and we will get you people that can help you. And this goes on in the Black community, in the Latino community, in the American Indian community, and other communities of color that are in poverty. And this is a huge issue. So if we want to change something, we have to deal with that. And I'm hoping that helping our collaborative partners, understanding the value of that, such as you've already demonstrated, and Help Me Grow, the navigation from one system to the next, and what difference it makes in these poor people's lives and to their children is amazing. So please elevate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner McCroskey.
I'll even turn on the microphone this.
That would be, that would be a good move.
So I think Deanna highlighted one of the examples where First 5 is playing just a very different kind of partnership role with multiple county departments and systems in home visiting. From my perspective, there are several other ways that First 5 has been playing a different kind of partnership. For example, during the pandemic, I truly don't think that without Becca and her team, the early childhood education system would have been able to pull together resources from the city, the county, the LACO, et cetera, that really supported a very large number of providers and families during that point in time. And I'm just sitting here thinking about multiple examples, and Judy reminded when she talked about probation, that it feels like to me we could really jumpstart our strategic plan review with some case studies about sort of what roles are different departments and partners already playing? What role does First 5 play? So where could we double down on what we've been learning in operationally, how it works best?
Am I missing anything in the chat that I should know?
Are any other commissioners?
Okay. Any other commissioners? I don't see any hands raised virtually. Yes, please.
This is no way a criticism of you all. You are great at partnering, straight-up snake charmers. It's really more for my education and context as we move forward and think in strategic planning about how we partner and what opportunities there are. Do you feel like you have easy access to the entirety of the county family, not just the folks that are sitting here or OCP and already, but, you know, the agency which kept coming to my mind as we were talking, if we're really talking about poverty and root causes, is Public Social Services. Right? Jackie Contreras, the director over there, a great partner. And do you feel like you're easily and readily connected to her, like I said, in the entire spectrum of the county family? And do you need any assistance or facilitation from some of us who were there?
I'll start, and my colleagues can join in. I think, going back to the chair's comments earlier about the role of the board, I mean, you all are important connectors for us to the systems that we do want to partner with. And being on the board provides a certain level of access that a county department not on the board, we might not always have. I think at the end of the day, this does rely heavily on relationship building. And sitting at these tables, like with the Prevention Services Task Force, sitting at other tables, we've been very active in the county's work on the Food Equity Roundtable. Those are ways in which we can make connections to county partners that might not be on our governing board, and we do explore those. And DPSS is a good example where a lot of the work that led to some of our home visiting proposals that went to Sacramento were informed by a pilot we actually did with the DPSS local office. And so, is it perfect? No, we don't, we don't have perfect line of sight, and I think our board can help us make those connections where you see opportunities. And we will definitely continue to try to sit at those tables as well.
Well, I at least want to offer myself and to Carla, you all. You know, if there's a place you want to go in the county, I'll try to shine the light and take you there. I'm also working on developing those relationships. You know, we are all working in silos, but I'm, I mean, we're all trying to bust those silos down too, so to the extent, you know, I can help and facilitate that, don't hesitate. Secondly, I was wondering about one other potential big player in our community. And those are the Managed Healthcare Plans, particularly LA Care. Again, same question with no criticism, but do we feel like you have easy access and relationships to folks at LA Care? Or is that a place where also you might be able to use some assistance as we think about partnerships? And I just want to say, and I don't know if LA Care is listening, but they have a legal obligation to serve the populations we're talking about. It is not just us hat in hand to say, hey, please help us. It might be us going and saying, look, you're required to do this. We want to do it. Let's work together to make it better.
I think that's a great point, Commissioner, and one of our colleagues, Tara, who's head of our health systems team, is, actually chairs a work group with LA Care focused on child, child health issues. Taking a step back, though, I think, you know, managed care plan engagement is a critical body of work going forward for us, a great opportunity that we need to really be leaning into. And we've begun with the relationship we have with Promise Blue Shield that was mentioned on the sustainability, as one example of sustainability by our fiscal team. But these health plans have requirements on serving families and kids. And how do we help make sure that they are able to meet those requirements through some of the pilots or things, proof of concepts that we're testing? Help them meet those requirements, and then making sure that they're accountable for those state contracts that they have in order to serve kids and families. So LA Care is a partner in our Help Me Grow work as well. So we've got different pieces of it, and I think you're pointing to a broader strategy around managed care plan engagement that we need to lean into.
I couldn't agree with you more, having just ended my two-year service in the LA Care board. You know, they too recognize that they are being asked by the state legislature, many instances, to branch out into new worlds. CalAin being an example. The behavioral health dollars that they receive is another example. They realize and they had a steep learning curve. So I agree with you. It's not about hat in hand. It's about partnership and how we can help them navigate their way through these very new areas. I completely agree.
This is also true of Kaiser, who are more recently entering the world of child protection and and mental health issues that they haven't been in before.
Oh, they've been in mental health. They haven't always.
They've been in limited mental.
Yes.
We have to define it. Like giving chemotherapy for four weeks. It doesn't necessarily cure the disease. But I mean, I think that we have, we have an opportunity to be a voice, ask them to come to the table and deliver, and certainly have many long conversations with LA Care about, you know, encouraging their various programs to report abuse and make sure they have the appropriate interventions and mental health services as we move towards an actual cure, if there is such a thing.
Or at least parity in the delivery of the services.
Health, right. I mean, we would like to see them at that table, and I'd love to see this group lead them there. And I think for many people on this, I mean, I'll speak for several of us that were on the search committee for, and hired, and we're thrilled that Carla's here. Thank you. We also would like to have a really good relationship and an open relationship and getting the help from the staff and bringing our expertise to that if they have questions for us and improved communication between us was one of our goals in looking at where we went for the next years.
Couldn't agree with you more. As you added Kaiser, I think we should just look at all of the, particularly the publicly funded, like I said, is LA Care, but all of the health plans that service are identified priority population. Any other comments?
I had one question for Dr. Scorsa and Commissioner Hager. The idea of additional communication with our staff and making sure that that's part of the work we're doing, completely, completely committed to it. There's some commissioners that have reached out, and I'll be participating in the meetings. But we do want to make sure that that's part of the work that we do. So thank you for lifting that up. I had a question for Dr. Scorsa. So actually, starting with the comment. So actually, starting with the comment, your definition on structural racism is one of the most brilliant definitions that I've seen. The intersectionality of space, relationships, and institutions is just right and perfect in regards to where we should be looking for some of those changes. First Five LA is really committed to systems change. And I, I think your definition gets us to challenge how we will look at structural racism as we think about long-term systems change. And I'm curious, as we enter into our strategic plan, if, one, there's frameworks that you think are critical for us to include in our analysis of strategic review? And then, two, as we look at some of the inequities that have been calcified into systems, how they serve children, the, the work that you're lifting up, how we make sure we're constantly looking at our strategic framework with that lens as we look at systems change and we look at structural racism within systems, what you would offer to First Five LA as we start looking at some of that information?
Thank you so much for that question, Commissioner, and I really appreciate that reflection as well. I, I think it's important to, to help answer the two questions that you asked, one about frameworks. There, yes, I think there are a number of frameworks you can look at. We, we specifically chose the Life Course Theory Framework. In fact, there is a node that is meeting, a research node that's meeting on UCLA's campus this week because we wanted to understand the ways in which multi-generational and/or intergenerational decisions affect the lives of children. We wanted to understand the role that institutions had upon families from a race, place, gender perspective. So we wanted to look at a number of factors to help inform the population of outcomes the county could help take on and address, which led to those strategic goals. But there, there are certainly many others. I think, you know, Raj Chetty's work in Harvard talks quite frequently about, he's a social economist, he talks quite frequently about the role that poverty and concentrated disadvantage plays. So for example, in the conversation that you all just had, yes, fetal alcohol syndrome is an important consideration for Native American and African-American and other families, but that's often because there is a higher prevalence of alcohol establishments or liquor stores in neighborhoods where folk are more likely to access that, that type of, you know, to access those, those types of products. And what often happens, especially for, for African-American communities, is that many mothers don't know that they're pregnant. So within those first two months, which is where most of the drinking happens, and once they find out they're pregnant, they stop drinking. The vast majority of, of mothers stop drinking. But if you go to other cultures where salt, where drinking is prevalent and it's a social activity, mothers will continue to do that over time, right? So you look at many countries like Italy or Norway or, and upper sort of economic structures where you see, for example, mothers who are used to drinking wine during, you know, their social events. They will continue to drink even though they are pregnant. So I don't, I think we have to be really thoughtful and analyze how we're approaching this work. So when you ask, and I, I laid that up, I laid, I, I said that to, to help answer your second question, which is, how can we do the work we need to do to examine and make sure that we're building this stuff into our strategic planning work? Well, I will tell you that it often is driven by the policies that we engage in. So my invitation is to, to build in to your practice the use of not only racial equity tools, but analyses that are going to help drive an assessment of your policies, your procedures, your practices, and where your funds and resources are targeted. And so by using data, engaging in this policies, procedures, and practices analysis, and then also examining sort of what, what, what drives the work you're doing from a policy lens, I think you have an opportunity to examine the, the structural implications of, 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 of these sort of efforts you're engaged in. And I'll close by saying this, because I, I think you're almost to time. One of the things that we know, for example, with FFPSA, is while it is a very helpful sort of, I think, step in the right direction, that one of the challenges that we, we face is that it does call for providing support to children who are at risk of, of being removed, right? So we have to think about where we make investments in prevention outside of just the populations that are most immediately in need, so that we prevent these things from happening in the future. And we also have to think about how we get systems out of people's lives. Like I hear us talking about services, but, you know, when you go to certain neighborhoods, they don't talk about using county services. They don't talk about needing to go to First Five and get support, right? It is built into their neighborhoods and into their communities that there are going to be opportunities. And so, you know, reexamining the role that we play in people's lives and figuring out how we can actually get out of their lives so that they can live in a self-determined way, so that we're not being paternalistic, I think is an important consideration in any of the sort of strategic efforts that we engage in. So I, I certainly am happy to share resources, share tools, share assets that, that we're using countywide in support of the work you're doing. So please feel free to reach out, and much like Brandon has offered as well, Commissioner Nichols has offered as well. We're happy to make introductions and or support you all as you think strategically about how to deepen your relationships within the county, especially from an anti-racist lens.
Thank you, Dr. Scores. You've got lots of thumbs up and applause. So folks were in the amen corner, appreciating and valued, you know, validating your comments. I thought I saw Ms. Sagala had hand raised? Or was that a situation where, like, it happens to me, your hand just raises on its own, I'm like, I don't raise my hand? Okay, maybe not. All right. Any other questions or comments from commissioners before we move on from this really informative discussion? Thank you so much. Seeing none, we'll see if there's any public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments on this side.
Public, you missing out on that one. Because that was, that was timely and powerful. So I think at this point, it's time for us to move on to see if there's any general public comment.
Confirming there are no general public comments either, Supervisor.
All right. With that, let me thank you all for, I thought was a really powerful discussion. Thank you to the staff for all of the presentations and the work that went into them. Thank you for opening us with connecting the dots with the relevance of the month that we are in. Happy Black History Month to all. And some of you may or may not know, today is also my predecessor's birthday. So we're going to send former Chair Supervisor Sheila Kuehl a happy birthday greeting from the seat she used to occupy. So happy birthday to Supervisor Kuehl.
I'll be seeing her tonight, I will tell her.
Will you tell her I said happy birthday from the chair she was in?
If I, if I may add.
And knowing, and knowing her, she's probably watching to supervise my first chairwoman's year. I see you, Sheila, and happy birthday. Yes, please.
I also wanted to add, it's also our stenographer Heather Lim's birthday today.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I appreciate you. Have I missed anything, madam?
Oh, no, we do not.
That was the one thing I did need a vote on. All of these staff presentations were receiving filed, we did that. And I could merely adjourn the session.
That is correct.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.